Our AV person is set. Good evening and welcome to the Town of East Fishkill Planning Board of July 16th, 2024. Will everybody please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We'll start with the roll call, starting with John Greenan.
John Greenan.
John Taffey.
Lori G.
John Eichman.
Richard Campbell.
Ed Mioshi.
Sarah Blutso.
And thank you. Upcoming meeting dates are August 20th, 2024, and September 17th, 2024. We have minutes for the meetings of May 21st and June 16th. Could I have a message or a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So, the first item on the agenda is JFE Associates. I don't see the applicant here, so we'll move to the second item on the agenda. The Podge Team Solar Array, that application was actually withdrawn, and so we simply need to close the public hearing. Could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, third item on the agenda, we're moving through pretty quick, is Gabriella Ross Flores' gas station.
Zoom out a little bit there. Considering that we have no audience, it's interesting how those are positioned. Gabriella Rose, we hear from air station and vacuum station. The last time we were here, we gave the board an update that we made application to the ZBA. We had a public hearing. It has remained open until we work with this board, specific to the vacuum and air station location. In addition, we have the propane chest and the ice chest onsite that we're adding into the application to formally have a permit on those. The board asked for a couple of baller locations around the chest, propane cabinet, and around the refuse enclosure, so we added those to the plan. And I think we just updated, or we just gave you the updated plan that we gave the ZBA, which we talked about adding a sign in front of the air vacuum station that would limit the parking to a couple of minutes to ensure that that space would hopefully remain free so that patrons could use that area. That's the real update from the board. There's really nothing else that we added to the plan.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board members?
Brian, this parking lot is real tight already, and you're going to be putting more stuff in there? I'm a little concerned about that.
Yeah, the air station is currently located in the back where the refuse enclosure is, so basically, we're just going to be repositioning that air station, which is in front of a parking space now. The thought was, is by repositioning the air station up toward the front of the lot, we could control how that hose is extended and hopefully not in the town right away. But I do agree, it is a tight site. There's a lot of activity there. This is just something that the applicant was hoping that we could entertain to look forward.
Is this moving the vacuum back to where it was originally? Because I think originally it was in the front, right? And then we, it wasn't approved there and it was installed?
Originally, after they opened, I believe, they installed it, and then we took it off the plan because we realized that it needed a permit because it's considered a structure.
Right, okay.
Was the ice station called, I mean, along the building or?
It's along the rear property line, I believe. There's a nice chest and a propane location. It's existing.
You don't have a plan, huh?
Yeah, I think we do. I can zoom in.
Or if you do, I can't see it.
Yeah. Here, try to zoom in here.
I think it might be right over there.
So, if you look here, this is where my circle, well, pointer is. That's the existing refuse enclosure. Let me try to get this more center. And then, the existing propane cabinet is sitting right on the property line right here, and then we have an ice chest that's sitting right alongside the fenced-in refuse enclosure. It's tight, but it is existing, and we're trying to formalize it the right way.
So Brian, you did meet with the zoning board, correct?
Yes, sir.
How did that go?
The zoning board entertained it. They, I think everybody agrees, it's a quite, it's a busy site, but that means the site is performing well. So the thought process was, is, you know, let's try to have, move the air station up front where it's more accessible and people can use it rather than have congestion in the back. But the ZBA's overall opinion, their concern was, again, the parking and how people utilize that space associated with that feature, and that's why we came up with the sign that hopefully limits parking to a certain period so people can use it. And I believe they deferred to you guys to get your input since it is a site plan amendment. So, but before they make a decision, they wanted to get some input from you guys.
Okay.
Is there any requirement to separate the propane from the refuse enclosure, or is that because it's enclosed, the separation is sufficient?
Yeah, nothing on the whole, sure isn't there?
Other questions and comments by either board members or our professionals?
I just have a comment that we have heard from a few folks that are concerned that live nearby about the parking on Lake Road. They don't want to see any parking on Lake Road, and I guess sometimes when it gets super busy at the gas station, people will park along there. So, they are, we're going to schedule this for a public hearing to allow folks to speak their mind, and you guys can listen to the comments, and then we can take it up under consideration.
Is there curbing on that side? I'm trying to remember.
I don't think there is.
Don't think there is.
No, there's nothing.
There's curbing on the inside and then...
Right, so it would then allow anybody just to pull off and park there?
Right.
Because that site is crazy busy. I mean, I think we can all agree with that.
But Rich, I think some of the parking also is the plaza to the west of there.
Holding people.
And whether it's employees parking there or patrons that are going to the doctor's offices and such, sometimes you see large trucks parked on the right-hand side of Lake Road while they run in to grab food or...
Yeah, it's easier to park.
Yeah, it's easier than pulling into the parking lot.
Especially if you have a bigger, like a dump truck or some type of...
But even a big contractor's truck, you know?
Mason dump, you know, smaller.
Yeah. Right, and part of that is when we did the original site plan, I think probably why people park there so much is the pavement is extended in that portion of Lake Drive, and I believe it's when we ran the water line across the street and down Lake Drive that when they redid the road, it actually came a little bit wider, so there is that opportunity to kind of park on the side of the road.
Is there like any delineation there that, you know, says this is shoulder, this is...
I don't know if there's striping there, but there are no parking signs along that street, because that was part of our site plan approval, because it was a concern when we did the original site plan.
So, does that become an enforcement issue versus...
Sure.
Yeah. Okay.
Just like at any of the shopping plazas in front of Acme, you know, we hear from time to time on social media that people park in those spaces, but it's an enforcement issue.
Okay. I'm sure with the gas station, they're gone so quick. I mean, by the time you call the police, they're gone.
Yeah, I mean, they're in and out.
Yeah.
So, we do want to schedule a public hearing, and will you be ready for that on August 20th?
Yes, sir.
Do we have enough time to be able to get all that done?
Sure.
Okay, so could I have a motion to schedule a public hearing for Gabriella Ross Flores' gas station for August 20th, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
The next item is also you. It's Shenandoah Lake Estates, Russo?
Yes, so, let me just pull this up. So, the last planning board meeting we were at, we discussed the ability to obviously reduce the fill-in port on the site. Again, to refresh the board's memory, the house is limited to a three-bedroom max. We're doing infiltrators, we're doing the current health department standards, which is a lower flow rate per bedroom, so we're trying to minimize the amount of fill as great as we can from a health department standpoint relative to the septic. Again, there's probably about 1,300 yards coming in for that. We can't really fool around with that number because that is a board of health number. Moving to the house side, we originally, I believe, had 1,500 yards, I mean, 1,500 yards coming in, I believe, or thereabouts. We spoke to the applicant, we played around with some floor elevations by pushing the basement down further so we don't have as much fill around the bottom half of the house because it is a step-down. And then we tightened up the grading around the house, so we were able to take that number down and go down to about 800 yards. So we're almost able to hit that, cut that number in half by tweaking the numbers and making it tighter. So we've tried to make every effort possible to reduce the fill-in port on this job and to obviously be sensitive to truck traffic with the neighbors while construction's going on. So that's the real update that we gave you. I gave you that in a letter, and that grading is reflected on this plan around the house side.
And it's feasible? We're not just tweaking numbers on a plan, it actually can be built that way?
It's feasible, because we increased the wall heights on the basement to push the basement floor down.
Okay.
And did I hear you say about half of the amount of sold?
Yeah, so we were about 1,500, yeah, 1,500 originally, and now we're just a hair over. I think we're 876, so it's a substantial reduction.
Indeed, okay. Other questions or comments from board members or professionals? If not, we want to schedule a public hearing for this as well, and is that something you'll be ready for on August 20th?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, could I have a motion to schedule a public hearing for Shenandoah Lake Estates, Russo, for the August 20th, 2024 meeting?
So moved.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I didn't wait for a second, I apologize. Second, get one?
Sure.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Paradise Preserve subdivision.
Oh, this one is just a simple procedural? So the applicant is, and actually, I'm recused from this application, so I'm just going to speak to procedure only. I believe if, Jackie, if you want to just explain or what's happening here, I believe the applicant is just requesting that the board consider opening seeker.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think, so we'll do that by declaring our intent to be lead agency. Could I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then, am I also correct, Michelle, that we want to refer this to the CAC, correct?
That would be standard procedure, yes.
And so could I have a motion to refer this to the, and help me out, CAC, Conservation...
Advisory.
Advisory Committee.
Committee.
So...
Is it committee?
Council.
Council, yep.
Council. Okay, could I have a motion to refer this to the Conservation Advisory Council?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Donovan 5 LLC. And do we have anybody...
Oh, he's out there, I saw him.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I think, you know, for the rest of the board, I think we've determined this is a minor site plan amendment, although we do want to hear the applicant, and so in that case, no public hearing will be required.
Yeah, so I think if, just by way of introduction, the last time they were here, they were asking for an extension of their approved site plan, but we realized that there had been some modifications and that they actually really needed an amended site plan. So they had started, they had begun the process with the ARC, but they went back to the ARC, I believe, which day was it? It was July...
July 8.
Last Thursday. Who reviewed and made a recommendation for approval of the current building, and there are some minor changes to the building footprint, there are changes to the building's appearance, and I think what they're asking for is for the board to consider this building rather than the one that was currently approved, which is slightly smaller than the one that was previously approved, and then the architecturals have been reviewed by the ARC.
The perimeter has definitely changed from its original.
Very minor changes, but yes.
Okay.
To a smaller...
Smaller, yes.
Yeah.
But the height, was this same?
No, it's higher.
It's higher.
Well, technically, I'm sorry, Michael Berta, the architect for the applicant, technically, the building is actually lower.
Oh, sorry.
Because the, if you remember the original building that was approved, it had a pitched roof on it. So the pitched roof was 29 feet to the mean point and about 35 feet to the ridge. So our building is going to be about 26, 27 feet tall, total, and it's a flat roof.
And was that original building, was it two-story?
One-story.
One-story, as is this?
Correct. Yeah, the other, it just, it had a lot of trusses in it with a steep roof pitch, a lot of unusable, you know, it was, it looked a lot like the building at A Nancy Court.
Okay.
You know, and if you look at that building, you see how tall that one is to the ridge. We're going to be, and the building in the front, which is, what is that, three, two Nancy Court?
I don't remember the several numbers there.
Yeah, the first building on the right, if you look at that one also, that's about 35 feet to the ridge, so we're going to be actually lower than the two of them.
And is the parking lot and things like landscaping and lighting, are those all the same as the original approval?
The parking lot is the same, the lighting is the same. What we've done with the landscaping is, in the back, they had concrete from the building all the way to the road. What we've done is we've eliminated some of that concrete there because I just didn't see a need for it, and we're putting a little bit of additional landscaping in the back of the building. But other than that, the landscaping in the front and the two sides is staying the same.
Okay, and the lighting's all downlighting, dark sky compliant?
Yes.
Okay.
And are there any building code changes from when they got their original approvals till now with this that we're looking at?
So there is a zoning change that the site was previously zoned industrial and now it's zoned B3, but I think the proposed use is kind of a light industrial use, and it's not like a hardcore manufacturing where they're bringing any chemicals, which is actually allowed use under the B3 zone.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I just have one question.
Yeah.
The parking is exactly the same, the number of spaces, okay. And do you know what the number of spaces in total for that particular building is?
I'm sorry, I don't have that, I don't have that number.
Okay, is it on your plan, Brian?
Not on my plan, it's on the original site plan.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to confirm that number, and we're going to add that to the resolution.
Okay, got it.
Okay? And I'll put it in as a whereas clause, it'll be the last whereas clause before the "now therefore" be resolved. I'll say whereas the approved site plan and the revised site plan maintain the same number of parking spaces.
Okay. Other questions or comments? And we do have a resolution, which I will go through. Route 376, Business Park, Lot Number 3, aka Donovan site plan. It's six Nancy Court, resolution offered by Planning Board member John Eichman. Whereas the applicant received site plan approval for a commercial building on Lot 3 of East Fishkill Business Park on June 2nd, 2009. Whereas the applicant previously received site plan approval extensions on a number of dates, commencing on April 6th, 2010, and lastly, for June 18th, 2024. Whereas the applicant is requesting an amended site plan approval to redesign the building facade and reduce the previously approved building footprint from 9,685 square feet to 9,260 square feet. Whereas the applicant submitted revised architectural plans to the ARC and met with the ARC on January 4th, 2024, and July 8th, 2024, and received ARC approval on July 8th, 2024. Whereas...
The approved site plan and revised site plan maintain the same number of parking spaces.
Okay, with that addition, now therefore be it resolved that the planning board approves the amended site plan for the approved project as represented on a map entitled Architectural Site Plan Proposed New Office Building for Donovan 5 BMAC LLC, Six Nancy Court, Waukesha Falls, New York, 12590, prepared by Michael R. Berta, AIA, dated December 6th, 2023, and be it further resolved within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. Could I have a second for this resolution?
I'll second, and then I have a question.
Okay, Lori.
Did we need to say something about, I think somebody said there was minor changes from the CAC that needed to be incorporated?
There were changes from the CAC or just...
ARC.
Sorry, ARC, I'm sorry. Oh, they have, they'd made changes that are not reflected on this plan?
It was, it was, let me show you what it was. It was, was minor change. They got a bump on there, they just wanted to make sure. If you see this, this bump right here and this bump right here, they wanted me to have a bump up right here above the bump.
Okay, so what do we need you to do then, is we're going to put a condition that you submit the revised plans to the ARC and to the planning board?
I'll do the, maybe tomorrow, if you're sure.
Okay, so we're going to add a condition after the "now therefore" be resolved, we'll say, subject to the following conditions. And we'll say revised plans per the ARC approval, okay?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Lori. And so, Lori, you seconded, so we will do a roll call vote. Board member Lori G.
Aye.
Ed Mioshi.
Aye.
Sarah Blutso.
Aye.
Richard Campbell.
Aye.
Donald Pepe.
Aye.
John Greenan.
Aye.
And John Eichman, I'm an aye. Carries, thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the time and the help.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, next item on the agenda is Treetop Development.
Good evening, chairman, members of the planning board. My name is Lucia Kiyokia with Caddine Fader, and we represent Treetop. I'm joined tonight by Ruben Torski, the Vice President of Development for Treetop, and Diego Villarreal, the professional engineer from JMC, and they are the project engineers. Thank you for having us this evening. You may recall that we did appear before you on Sketch Plan Review back in February of 2023. Diego and I were talking earlier today, but hard to believe it was that long ago. But since that time, we've been working on the plan and refining the plan. We didn't have a town staff meeting in December of last year, very productive meeting, excellent feedback from town staff, so that further refined the plan. So we did submit our preliminary site plan and special permit for a parking waiver application, which is what we will discuss with you tonight. Since the last time, I think we were before you, Treetop acquired four parcels, adjacent parcels that now make up the project site. It's approximately 143 acres total. They are proposing two Class A warehouse buildings. One building, or the larger building, is 665,000 square feet, the smaller building is 100,000 square feet. In a second, Diego will walk you through the plan, just a few preliminary zoning remarks. The property is located in the I-1 Light Industrial Zoning District, where warehouse use is principally permitted subject to site plan review from the planning board. As I mentioned earlier, and as you'll see on the plan, we are also requesting a waiver for the required number of parking spaces, and the planning board is authorized to issue a special permit and issue that waiver, and we'll be providing some information based on Treetop's experience with other similarly sized projects about what's a workable number of parking spaces, with the idea being, why provide parking spaces that are not needed or not used in all that extra impervious surface area? The property is characterized by wetlands, and the project team has been coordinating with the DEC with respect to wetlands and potential impacts to the wetlands and the buffer areas, and we anticipate filing our application with the DEC within the next week or the next few days. It's also characterized by steep slopes, so we'll be seeking that approval as well, and of course, we'll be preparing a stormwater pollution prevention plan and seeking review and approval of that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Diego and ask him to walk him through the plan, and we're happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Lucia. Good evening. For the record, Diego Villarreali with JMC, the planning and engineering consultant for the applicant. As Lucia had indicated, you know, we've been away for some time now, but have been working to update and refine the plan since the plan that you've seen last. Some of those updates did revolve around meetings with the DEC. We tried to engage them early before an application was made. After we reviewed the plan with your board, we did engage them for a couple of meetings to try to look at the wetlands that are on the property and look at the potential wetland impacts and try to make some changes so that when we go in there with the application, there's already been started some preliminary dialogue and review with the DEC themselves. The plan that you have before you is a rendered version of the site plan that was included in the application package that was submitted to the board. You'll see the property line highlighted in red. That is the overall 143-acre parcel that encompasses all of the parcels that Lucia had mentioned earlier. Donovan Drive and Limekill Road is off on the left-hand side of the page. I'll see if I can point to it here, off to the side of the page. Obviously, you can see Interstate 84 on the top of the page there. The two buildings, you can see pretty clearly here, the larger building is this 665,000 square foot building, and then you have the smaller building in the area here, it's approximately 100,000 square feet. We used the aerial photograph, and then we highlighted again the proposed improvements, but we thought it was important to show some of the environmental constraints that are on the property as well, specifically the wetlands. The wetlands are highlighted in blue, and you can see they focus really on the northern and eastern sides of the property. These were delineated, they were confirmed by the DEC, and they were picked up on the survey map, so they have been delineated and surveyed and verified. All of them do have that 100-foot buffer associated. We do not have any, there is wetland impacts, but they're only associated with the crossings of the driveways. So for instance, right in this area here, you'll see where our driveway crosses the two fingers of the wetland itself. That happens, and then the second one in this area here, where we're crossing a narrow portion of the wetland. I'm not sure if you can see the pointer on there. I'm sorry.
That's all right. I couldn't see it. I couldn't either.
There, okay, so you see the pointer, but it's going to be hard for me to point to it.
It disappears.
Right there. It's to the left-hand side of the building. Let's start with the driveway coming in off of Limekill Road. So if you look at that, if you see my pointer on the driveway there, this is the main access driveway that comes in and moves its way down and then provides access to the building itself. That is intended to be, let me just get out of this. And even zoom in a bit further here. Maybe we'll do it this way, just so you can see a bit more. So this is the driveway access off of Limekill Road. This is where the main driveway comes into the property, and this is where the sliver of land that comes out and extends towards Limekill Road. That is being used as the main access to the property. This is a change from the original plan that was presented to the board. Originally, we were looking at connecting directly to Donovan Drive and using Donovan Drive, but since then, we've worked with, again, staff, there were some comments that were looked at where we could potentially utilize this area, so now we have a driveway directly accessing Limekill Road, so you could come in directly off that main roadway, which again, provides access to 84. So now I'll start to...
Before you move that picture, the building that you're passing closest to there, what is that?
What is that use?
Is that...
Is that a church hall, is that?
Church.
Forgive me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a church. Do you know like grade levels there as their traffic comes in and out compared to there, or is it on grade?
It's pretty much on grade. I can verify that with my site plans, but it's very close to being on grade with the driveway from what I recall. But I'll take a look at the exact grades, and I can tell you what the difference is there. So as that driveway comes in, this is where you see the first wetland crossing. Hopefully, you could see the pointer now in that area there where the driveway crosses those two wetland fingers, and then it comes into the main portion of the building here. What you'll see is the first entrance here, truck traffic is separated from vehicular traffic and parking spaces. One of the comments that town staff made was trying to do something to separate vehicle traffic and parking from truck traffic entering in the loading areas. So vehicle traffic and somebody looking for a parking space would make a right-hand turn and come into this area here where there's a significant amount of parking spaces. And then all truck traffic would continue along, utilize this driveway here, and they would enter the loading area. So we really did some work on the plan to separate the two aspects out. You have the vehicle and the workers and the employees, they tailgate to the parking areas, and then you have the loading spaces associated with the buildings themselves.
Now, is this plan as we see it, are we looking at the amount of parking that's required for you to have the building?
It is not.
So we're looking at if you've got the variance for what you need for parking?
Just to clarify that to get the waiver correct. This is not a variance from your code. There is a waiver provision that allows this board to reduce that count. This shows the plan, as shown on the plan, shows the 529 parking spaces as opposed to the 814 that is required by your code. Again, we feel, and this is something that we've proven out several times over, that parking is in excess of what's needed, and there'll be information that's going to be provided to the board to justify that position. We've already provided information in the traffic and parking analysis, and we'll continue to supplement that as we go through this process.
Are you maxed out on parking where if there's a different use down the road for this same building that needed the parking that the code requires, that you could build it, or are you like right up against all your setbacks and everything?
No, there is space to increase the amount of parking. You also have to remember that with the loading spaces, that takes up a significant amount of pavement area that could otherwise be used for parking spaces. So if you're thinking about other uses that could exist that might not need the same loading requirements, some of that could get repurposed for parking. But then there's other areas on the site that we can add additional parking spaces on. Could we get to 814? I can't say definitively yes or no, but I know for a fact, based on the studies that we prepared, that there's additional spaces that parking could get laid out on for sure.
And this building has a specific use right now as you're coming to us?
Well, it is the warehouse use. That is what's proposed. It's the industrial warehouse use. It doesn't have a specific user, but the use under your code is the industrial use.
Single tenant, or are you going to park the building up?
I'm going to, unknown at this time, so.
And that's on both buildings?
Correct, yes. The actual user tenant space has not been determined yet. You want to, yeah, actually, this is probably a good opportunity to let Ruben from TreeTop just touch on that because I can see there's some questions with that, so I think it's a good one to break.
Good evening. Ruben Torski with TreeTop. So in terms of users, we are intending to use this as a warehouse industrial use. No tenants really come until they know the project's, you know, happening and for real. So this is on spec right now. But if you look at kind of the overall design, we actually looked at if this is not a single tenant, how would it operate as two or three tenants? And we actually bifurcated the parking for employees on each side of the building, so that allows for devising the building and allowing that type of use. So we are future planning, just in case that happens. Building two usually will be a single tenant and small enough so that, but also that can be devisable, and the parking's in the front of the building, so that could work as well, so.
And is the second building accessed through by driving past the first one, or is there a different access point off Donovan or somewhere?
We're going to, if we could go back to the site plan, now we can see the driveway that comes in again. You drive along this northern driveline that's separated from the loading spaces itself, and that is the main driveway. So to get to the second building, you would utilize that driveway, continue around, and then use this driveway here, which would provide you access to the parking and loading spaces that surround the second building.
Is that also how you access the second employee lot on the larger building?
Correct. Everything is from this area here. So there's one main driveway around basically the perimeter of the property that cars and trucks would utilize to circulate the property, but then when they're maneuvering in and out of their respective parking spaces, whether it's a vehicle parking or a truck parking, they're in a dedicated space. Trucks will not be in a vehicle parking lot, and cars will not be in a truck loading parking lot area. There's no overlap between the two. They're really, tried to separate those two and make them independent of each other.
You're saying the 100,000-square-foot building's parking lot is the one attached to the bigger building?
No, it's right here. So there's a parking lot in the back side of the building here, and then the loading, the trucks go in this area here. So when you come in, if you want to go to that 100,000-square-foot space, if you're a truck, you would stay to the left, load, back in, and go back out. If you're a vehicle that's looking to park at this building, you would make this right-hand turn and park in the back of the building. Everything is still interconnected. It was important that we still have connectivity and interconnection for emergency services, fire access, fire trucks and circulation, and protection around the building. So you still have driveways everywhere and interconnection, but the main driveway serves your trucks and your vehicles, but then the parking spaces and the loading areas have been broken out separately from that.
But one single entrance and exit onto the entire site?
Correct. With the exception of, as it goes here, there is this second connection out to Donovan Drive in this location here for emergency purposes. Which we will have, but the idea is to have that for emergency access only, not to have that being a fully functioning driveway in that area. It really is intended to be for emergency purposes only.
How do you intend to traverse the wetlands areas? Is it going to be just a culvert, a bridge?
Culvert, yeah. So we, and this was, again, proactive, trying to minimize areas. You can see where the wetland widens out, and it's highlighted in blue. That's the wetland area itself. The buffer is highlighted in this, I guess, orange or beige color, whatever you want to call it. So where we're crossing is these two, you know, fingers that come out. Those are more watercourses and streams, so we'll be able to culvert those and come across to access the bigger portion of the property. So when you look at the actual wetland disturbance, it's very, very limited. And then again, the buffer disturbance is somewhat limited, but we have more buffer disturbances based on the amount of wetlands that are on the property themselves. As Lucia had indicated, again, the board received the preliminary set of site plans, grading, utility, and infrastructure plans to show how we are handling stormwater management. We developed a full stormwater pollution prevention plan with different ponds and different, just give it a chance to load. You have all these stormwater management areas. These were the, this is all the calculations that were done to demonstrate that we could satisfy all the stormwater requirements. So we will submit the full stormwater pollution prevention plan, but all the preliminary analyses have been complete and was the basis of the design that was submitted to this board. Water and sewer, you see in the report that was provided. Sewer onsite will be handled by a wastewater treatment plant that would be approved by the DEC as well. And then water, there are two options. One is municipal water that's accessible via Griffin Lane immediately adjacent to the site, but that requires some improvements that would be on that private driveway, or we would look at a well system onsite itself. So it would be one of those two options. A traffic study was included. There was an analysis that was included that looked at the intersections along Limekill Road as well as its intersections with Interstate 84. We showed through that analysis that based on the uses that are proposed, that there would not be any significant impact to the operations of those intersections. We did propose some signal timing modifications as part of that traffic study to those intersections that are signalized there, just to offset some of the delays that could created. So I know that was not reviewed as part of the review that we just received, but I'm sure it will work its way into the system and we'll get a full review of that traffic study as well. As Lucia had indicated, we are gearing up to submit to the DEC and start that process. Obviously, we can't get through that full process until we receive our secret determination from this board, but we wanted to at least initiate that process with the DEC to start understanding what, if any, additional modifications are needed to the plans as a result of that. So that was really an overview. Happy to dive in and answer any other questions on the plan. Any preliminary questions that the board might have?
Yeah, I realize you don't have specific tenants yet, but do you expect this to be like around-the-clock operation, three shift, or?
Hard to say at this point, but I'm going to defer to Ruben on that one.
Yeah, typically, we like to be 24/7. You know, typically, what we've done in terms of lighting, if that's a concern, is any outdoor lighting would be on occupancy sensors after a certain time. And most of the third shift is really limited to inside work, is really no truck deliveries during that time, so. But yeah, typically, we like to be 24/7.
And you just hit on something that really triggered a memory from the conversation we had last time, and I think it's important to touch on, which is the topography on the property and the relationship to the surrounding properties, because we do have some residential properties to the south. Obviously, with Interstate 84 just to the north, and limited things to the east and to the west, it's really that southern property line. The way this property has been, excuse me, I'm sorry.
That's not necessarily true, because I was going to bring up a point. I live across 84.
On the other side.
I look right at it at the end of Griffin Drive.
Okay.
So I know that you're trying to build it into the hillside to protect everybody who's on East Oak Cross and all of that stuff, but I'm going to be looking straight across at that, and I don't, I'm not sure how you're going to fix that, so it's not a scar on the side of the hill.
Well, okay, so a couple of things. One, you're touching on doing half my presentation for me, thank you, with that, but we are building this into the hillside. I'm going to start with that southern property line, just because, again, we know that they're really immediately adjacent to it, and as you had indicated, really, we're trying to build this into the hillside to a certain degree. Part of the building is buried on that backhand side, so we sit it down a little bit lower. And then the topography really rises up when you get beyond this. You see some retaining walls that were tearing in this area, so everything's really set down from those adjacent properties. And then we are maintaining that wooded buffer that exists between the properties, this area that connects all the way down, you see the triangular shape, and then the area between the residential properties here to the left-hand side. So we really tried to work hard to sink the building as much as possible, create as much of the buffering in that area as you possibly can. The view from 84, again, I can't speak to where you are and how high you're situated, so it's very hard for me to exactly understand that, but it's something that we can certainly look at.
I look straight out at the last house on Griffin Drive.
Yeah, understood. So, but we did, when you look at this plan, we are set back a good distance from 84. So view sheds from 84 itself does have a significant buffer. Again, how far you're set back, where you are from an elevation standpoint, that I really can't touch on, but when we're focused on the surrounding properties immediately adjacent to us, it's really the, a significant amount of buffering is being maintained around all perimeters of the property.
So how tall is the tallest side of the building, and how tall is the-
The building is 50 feet high. That's max height. So on the loading area side is where you would see that full 50-foot exposure on that north side.
Single-story inside, though?
Single-story.
Okay, other questions or comments by board members? Sure, professionals have some things that they'd like to go on.
So I have a couple. The second building, the smaller one, is there an alternate connection or access to that building?
No.
Okay. Is there any potential for that? Just in case, you know, if there's only one singular driveway and there is an emergency where it's blocked, another way to get there?
No, I mean, we're limited because of the location of the property. You also have the wetlands that delineate that. The only other alternative would be to have emergency access to Griffin. However, Griffin is a private roadway in that area there, so.
Okay. And then, yeah, as you did indicate, you know, because the timeframe that we did get the traffic study, we haven't had a chance to go through it.
Which is understood, we have time, so.
But just a turn of the page review and looking at some levels of service. I mean, there are, we do see some degradation of the level of services on the 84 ramps, so. And I have to go back and look at the other traffic studies for I Park, for Amazon, Hudson Valley Logistics. I don't recall that we, you know, we were into that E and F range with those projects, so I got to look and see where that's coming from. I think you're going to certainly raise the eyebrow of the DOT if we start to see levels of service on those ramps degrade, so I think that's something, you know, we got to take a close look at. I think some of the suggestions of the timing, and Limekill is a little bit of a different story because there's multiple lanes and it's kind of infrastructure built for what you're doing, but most of all of that is going right, not left. So the left turn off of 84 to get to this site, I think that's one of the level services that offers some problems. So we'll take a look at that and see if there's some disconnect with the traffic, or if that's really truly the case, or what's going to be projected, but we'll have to look at that closely, and then at some point when we get to where you're comfortable with the plan, we're going to need to see DOT's review and see what their input is.
Brendan, are you thinking it might be signalized then?
Well, one is signalized, one isn't, right? The one, the-
Yeah, I'm talking about the exit from the eastbound, right? Comes off.
Right.
You're going left on Limekill, and it's not signalized, right?
It's unsignalized, correct.
Right. They did look, again, just my turn of the page review, they did look at like signal warrants.
We did. Yeah, I was just going to hit on that.
It maybe fell a little short of that, but not significantly short of that, and then there might be some other potential. Dare I say the word roundabout?
Round.
But, you know, that's a-
I'm shocked, I'm just shocked.
Roundabouts are hot topic, huh?
That one has, you know, I think there's, there's two right lanes that come off and then just merge into a Limekill. So then there's, you know, the singular lane that makes the left, so, you know, traffic kind of gets separated there, but that, that's the movement we got to look at a little bit closer and see how that impacts. The parking ride is there. DOT is also evaluating a truck parking facility in that area. They're evaluating several sites, but Limekill and 84 is one of the sites they're evaluating. So.
Again, we can, we provided the traffic analysis. Again, we'll continue to work with staff, try to address comments. As he had indicated, the degradation did happen at the unsignalized intersection there. We didn't meet the warrant analysis that we looked at, but that's always something that we can obviously have conversations with DOT about, and if it comes to a point where a signal is warranted at that location, then that's something we would have to look at. Regarding the other signal, that's where we looked at signal timing modifications to see what we can do to improve the levels of service there.
Is this something where you can kind of tweak the scheduling so that it's kind of off-peak hours, or is it just a constant, you know, first and second shift is a constant?
Tricky question. I will say off the bat, the truck drivers are always driving in off-peak. They don't want to be sitting in traffic when workers are going to work, people are going to school, right? They're always kind of navigating during off-peak hours anyway, but it's hard to dictate to the tenants when it's unknown at this point, but-
So they may just do it naturally because they're going to try to avoid it anyway?
They do, yeah.
I think from, you know, a traffic analysis perspective, we're always trying to look at the worst-case scenario, because it is, because it is unpredictable in some, you know, certainly for a lot of circumstances, so.
Doesn't tenancy have some impact on that? I mean, like if you don't have a tenant, and please don't take this the wrong way, you get an Amazon-type tenant, has a much different traffic pattern than if you got some warehouse that just, you know, had certain activities.
I mean, that's a great point, and to touch on that. While we don't have a tenant, we still need to define the use, and when we look at the worst-case scenario, an Amazon-type tenant is a sorting facility that has significant- worst-case scenario, an Amazon-type tenant is a sorting facility that has significantly more traffic associated with it than a non-sorting facility. The analysis and what we're looking at now is a non-sorting facility, so you don't get that, and that's something that was included in the traffic analysis, and that's something we would expect in any type of approval resolution that this board, if and when we get to that point, would identify. So we would not be able to look at a worst-case scenario that looks at a non-sorting facility and then put a last-mile distribution center or something like that in there without having to come back or make modifications to the plan to accommodate.
So they, in order for them to get a C, we'd have to really know the occupancy there and then make that decision.
If they came in, let's say they have it approved on spec, if they came back with a different use than what we approved, we would probably do a supplemental traffic study on that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So Michelle and our approval then will be specific that it's a non-sorting?
Correct. And also, we would probably be specific as to the trip generation rates.
Yeah.
And we'd have Brendan to advise us on what to put in the resolution to make sure that we're covered and that we could require additional traffic study if we needed to.
And that's something we discussed with staff. We were, you know, that was, with the genesis of the traffic study, that was a clear discussion that we had, and it was something that we understood.
Because that did happen with one of our warehouses. It was a higher traffic generator and then it went to a lower traffic generator. I have some comments due.
Yes, please.
I just did a preliminary. There is also a, I have a consulting planner that's preparing comments that you'll probably get at the beginning of August, okay? But I did a quick run-through, and I know, just by way of, I believe this was a sketch plan until this is the first actual formal application that we've received from them, so our comments are gonna be getting a little more formal. I saw that there's a bog turtle study that was prepared and included in the submission. I didn't see anything about Indiana bat, so I'm assuming that you didn't get any hits on the Indiana bat. It surprised me, but.
Well, no, Indiana bat is identified as, it's in this area, and what would it be? It's limitation of tree clearing between the months of, what is it, October through March, or excuse me?
So you'll just need to.
We'll identify that for sure.
Yeah, that would be great, and then also just make sure that the bog turtle study and anything about the Indiana bat is included in the circulation when we get to that point.
Okay.
Or goes immediately to the D E C.
Okay.
For them to review.
Probably not just the Indiana bat too, right?
Yeah, might be, might be other bats, yeah.
Did you say?
Because I believe the only thing that was in there, and I didn't, I'll admit that I didn't go through with the fine cheese cone, but I believe it was bog turtle specific, so maybe they just haven't included the Indiana bat piece yet.
I'll double-check it. Again, I thought it was, but that would, again, just be limiting the tree clearing between certain months.
That's fine, as long as we, as long as they receive it and they can weigh in on it, because it's ultimately their decision. Just, just a little housekeeping, when you're, if you request the parking waiver, you would be requiring a special permit, which would, so make sure that, and this is just to keep in the back of your head, that when you do any advertising for any public hearings, you also advertise for that. I saw that we would, will probably require some sort of noise study of the potential impacts at the residential property lines, for especially for those southern homes that are near the parking. Proposed building number two is surrounded by wetlands and would require wetland disturbance permit, which you already identified, for parking, for the access to the building, and then buffer disturbance for the parking areas. So, let's see, the access drive to building one as well. I would ask that the applicant list and quantify, you, I think you had it in the E A F, it's like 1.85 acres of disturbance to the adjacent area, and then, I can't remember, is it 0.36 acres of disturbance?
Sounds right, yeah.
Something like that to the wetlands itself, so I'm just giving you those numbers quantified, just so you understand what we're talking about as far as disturbance to the wetlands. The, the building looks to be, there's, looks to be extensive retaining walls as part of the project, and I admit that I'm not an engineer, so maybe this is more your purview, but I just made some comments with, with regards to those retaining walls, and I think we might need some renderings showing the building and those retaining walls, particularly from where the residential properties will be. And I think in some cases, there were, there were two retaining walls, so there was one like 10 feet, and then, I don't know if I'm giving the dimensions right, but I felt like there was like a difference in 20 feet at one point. So there's some, there's some significant topographical changes, and there are gonna be some significant retaining walls, so I just feel like that's important to understand. Also, with regards to the way it looks and lighting for the folks that live around it, and I have a bunch of lighting comments that I just want you to keep in mind when you're spec-ing out your lights. All lighting fixtures should be dark sky compliant. They should be designed, located, installed, fitted, shielded, and directed, so as not to present hazard to drivers or pedestrians. Because there's so many wetlands, we'd want everything shielded so that the light is not hitting those wetlands, because they're literally up against those parking lots. So you're gonna, you're not gonna be able to, obviously, not be able to control what's on the parking lot and what's kind of glare when you look at the parking lot, but anything that is beyond that, that parking lot curbing should be black, and they can do that. That's pretty easy to do with the shielding.
Yes, straightforward.
Let's see, all LED light sources, I'm assuming it's gonna be LED, shall have a correlated color temperature of between 2,000 K and 2,700 K. That's the warmer light, not the blue lights. All fixtures should be shielded to prevent light trespass and glare. And then it would be great if we could, when we get more specific, we could talk about some color rendering, but we can get more specific, you and I together on that, because I have some ideas about just keeping the lighting to a minimum there, because I think that's gonna be something that you, that would help you with neighboring properties. Architecture elevations and rendering should be provided. I know that you guys have a bunch of locations that you're working on renderings that I provided to you a while back, so I know that those are happening. I just was mentioning it. Locations of proposed signage should be provided, because the planning board actually approves the locations of the signage, so, and I know there probably will be significant signage and wayfinding signage here, so we just locate it on the map to the extent that you can. If you have a signage plan that you're gonna come up with, where, where there are certain areas, it would be great to have it approved as part of your site plan, because that helps you in the future, then you don't have to pull out so many different building permits when you go to, to construct, okay? So to the extent that you can do that, that's great. We've had some issues with warehouses recently that have been constructed as far as not having adequate staff break areas on the outdoors where, where staff can go and sit and have their breaks. So we'd really like to see that as part of the design, areas where the staff can go and sit, because I think in some of the locations, they've had them, they've been doing it in the parking lot, congregating in the parking lot, which has created some hazardous conditions, so we'd like to see designated locations for those break areas.
Okay.
Is that external on top of what's internal?
Yes, yeah, because they're outside a lot. At least, that's what we've been experiencing. Let's see, I think right now that might be all I have for now.
Okay. Rich?
Yeah, I have a few comments. We were able to get a formal memo together for you, so hopefully that outlines a few things. Quick question for you, the remote, you have, off the emergency exit, you have a remote loading area?
Yes.
What's the thinking of that? I'm just curious as to what would be happening there, since it's remote from the building?
Simply trailer storage.
Okay.
It's not loading, it's for trailer storage only.
Okay, so maybe relabeling that, because if it's just, one thing, if something's parked there, it's quieter use rather than, thing, loads are getting dropped and loaded and that.
Yeah, I think that's a very valid point. It's not intended to be necessarily, it's storage for trailers, because a lot of times they have to store trailers on-site, so that's where they would go.
Okay, understood. With the wetlands, with the crossings, the buffer area usage, are you thinking that you're gonna have any wetland mitigation?
Yes, there will be a wetland mitigation plan as part of our D E C.
So you have some ideas on where that might occur?
100%. There's a lot of, one of the things here, there's a lot of opportunities on-site to create some additional wetlands, to provide some enhancements to the buffer, so there would be a full wetland mitigation plan to, to address both the wetland and the adjacent area impacts as required by D E C.
All right, perfect. And then for your wastewater treatment plant, do you have an idea of what you were thinking for the type of treatment?
Not, we have discussed it, we're looking at a couple of options. I just think we need to go a little further into the process before we engage it. It's gonna be one of the proprietary devices that has the ability to discharge and be in compliance with all of D E C's regulations.
Yeah, we just want to make sure that when you do get to that point, that you do leave yourself enough room and enough space to do that.
Yeah, it was allocated on the plan.
Yeah, we have a building.
Again, we've consulted with somebody at this point to just get an understanding on the size of the building that's required, any service area to it, and that's how that was delineated on the plans accordingly.
Okay. That's it.
Okay, Chris, anything from fire?
I do, yeah. Normally, a lot of my questions would be related to the type of tenant, which obviously you don't know, the kinds of products that are inside the building, and there were for truck trips, we have, the number of employees that we have inside, related facilities, and what kind of emergency level calls you have, EMS calls, fire calls on a regular basis. That's become a real problem for us with some of our warehouses. Other than that, so for the, the emergency entrance, you said, is that gated at all, or is that open access all the time?
It would be gated. We would want to have it some type of gate, and we would coordinate, obviously, whatever you would require from an access standpoint.
Access, so, you said the height of the building is 50 feet?
Correct.
Generally, in case of a fire, we have to operate outside of a collapse zone, which we consider one and a half times the height of the building, at least for a safe zone, which, I was kind of doing some rough math with, it looks like those loading zones, 53-foot trailer, you're probably well outside of that, but in that kind, I guess, western side of the south side of the building, if you could see the, find out the width of the pavement in there, just off the top of my head, it looks like it's probably not enough for us to be more than 75 feet away to operate in that area.
If you're talking about in this area here?
Your pointer doesn't show up.
You can't see.
Yeah, yeah, well, no, we are, yes.
This area in here. So that area, gotta remember too, also, we can get the height of the building, that's where part of the building is buried, so it's not that full 50-foot height necessarily all in that area. Some spots are, some spots are not. I can get some more information on it.
Okay.
But that parking width is about 60 feet, just so you know. Order of magnitude from face of building to the opposite curb line is someplace in that 75-foot range. So if you're in the aisle, no, you would not be outside of that area there.
All right. And then as far as water, any plans for a cistern of some sort?
Yeah, so we will work with a water, again, it depends on two things. One, if we have access to the municipal water system, or if we have to do wells on-site. Obviously, we would have some type of cistern and available storage on the property in the event that we have to go with the wells.
Bearing in mind, so if you're aware, if you're not connected to municipal water, we're shuttling water from somewhere else to fight a fire on that property, you know, 2,000, 3,000 gallons at a time.
Yeah, yeah.
And then also be aware you're in an entirely volunteer fire district, so.
Yeah.
That's just something to keep in mind as far as your fire protection goes.
We would have to have some water storage on-site, obviously, and would be designed in accordance with whatever requirements there are.
All right.
You'd inside the building with all the coals?
Yeah, yeah, good.
So you'd be fully sprinkled and?
Yes, yeah.
Interior stand pipes?
Yeah, the sprinklers aren't a concern as much as the water that fills the sprinklers have to come from somewhere. When you run out, you run out.
Yeah.
You'd also be looking for some hydrants exterior, you know, in case one of your trucks lights up or something.
We will coordinate with you exact hydrant locations. We provided some preliminary locations on the plan, but we will fully just coordinate with you and as many as, in the specific locations that you would like to see them.
Okay.
Then the other spot, you have that little cul-de-sac on the south side of the building there?
This one here, bottom, south side?
Yes. We look to be able to continue the driveways right through there, so we have full circulation.
That is something we'd have to look at. There is grade change there. That's how we accommodated the grade change with burying part of the building, and then the loading area needs to sit at that lower elevation, because that's where you have the access. So again, always, I'm always gonna tell you we'll try to look at it, but that's my preliminary feedback, is just because of the grade separation, and again, keeping loading area separated from vehicles was important, and we did give you full access around all parts of the building there.
And any of those cul-de-sacs, they have to meet our turning radius for?
100%, they're very large, yeah, would be able to accommodate full-size vehicles turning in that area there.
I actually have two more small things. One, I forgot to mention landscaping, so to the extent that, I know that it may be a little preliminary right now, but to the extent that we can start thinking about that, that'd be great. And then also, is there any plan to have a bus station or any sort of public transportation to this location?
I haven't discussed that yet, but that's, yeah, I'm sure we can.
I don't know, Brendan, if they even consider that, but I know that there's a pretty active one.
Yeah, I actually think the county just got a grant to try to improve bus service to some of these facilities like Amazon and logistics centers, so. I know they're actively working on that. I think they're actually buying some, buying a special bus to have a, some direct service, so it'd be a matter of being able to get in and out in a, in a certain way. It might be at the entrance, I don't know, but.
Yeah, I mean, we could look at it for sure.
Yeah, we did have, yeah, for the other larger warehouses, there were definitely, you know, some transit areas reserved. Makes sense.
Okay, any further questions or comments, board members or professionals? Well, if not, I guess we'll be looking forward to receiving further information?
Get some supplemental information, yeah. And thank you. Get this into you as soon as possible, and I don't know if you want, if there's anything else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
See you soon.
Well, thanks. So next item on the agenda is Fire Springs Bridges subdivision.
We're almost done with this one. We just received the Health Department approval right before the holiday, so we made a final revision, submitted it to the town for review, so we're just here tonight to hopefully extend our approval, so we can, we can file in the next month.
Does anybody have any questions?
No, so I'll just give a quick little summary of what's going on here.
Okay.
The subdivision approval expired on April 18, 2024. We had received a request for an extension previously. We were waiting on a couple of things, so we didn't put it on the agenda until now. So it looks like right now we're asking the planning board to consider a three-month extension through July 18th with an additional 30 days granted to the applicant, provided the applicant gives a plan to the town engineer that satisfactorily addresses and corrects some existing encroachments in the town right away by the applicant. So I think there, Brian, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the issue is that there, there is some drainage that ended up being put into the town right away rather than on the property, so they're working through those things, but in any case, the applicant is going to revise the subdivision plat and then provide it to the town engineer for his review and approval, and that's a condition of getting the additional 30 days, okay?
Got it. Okay.
But that's all you need, the 30 days just to finish this last item?
Right, so kind of working off of what Michelle said, we've been working with the applicant directly, and he's been working with Scott offline, and what we did is, our latest submission to the board, we tried to incorporate the changes that were expressed to us through the applicant with his conversation with Scott, and I just, Scott did a review member, review memo on February 15th, which we revised our latest plans and the town has. So I would just reflect that we'll, we'll work with Scott to address his February 15th letter and all his provisions in there, which speaks to what Michelle's saying.
Okay, so I should, we'll just add that as a condition then, well, because if he's got a specific memo, we can add.
Michelle, I'll give you a copy too, if you want it.
Okay, and I'll just say satisfactory resolution of the town engineer review memo. I can read it when you get to that point.
Is that not condition number one that you gave me in the last version?
I think there's maybe other issues here, let's see. I think there's a couple other little things.
There are other things, okay? All right, well, so when we get to that point, we'll.
You can ask me.
Okay, so resolution, name of subdivision plan is Fire Springs Bridges subdivision, excuse me, resolution offered by planning board member John Eichman, whereas the Fire Springs Bridges subdivision was granted final approval for a three-lot subdivision on April 18, 2023, whereas the applicant is awaiting approval from the Department of Behavioral and Community Health, and whereas the subdivision approval expired on April 18, 2024, at which time the applicant submitted a request for an extension, whereas the planning board agreed to consider a three-month extension through July 18, 2024, with an additional
with an additional 30 days through August 18, 2024, contingent upon the applicant providing a plan to the town engineer that satisfactorily addresses and corrects the existing encroachments on the town right-of-way by the applicant and now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby extends final subdivision approval through August 18, 2024 for the above project is represented on a map entitled Bridges Subdivision, prepared by James Ticos Engineering PC dated May 23, 2022 and last revised March 30, 2023, subject to the following conditions. Number one, the submission of a plan to the town engineer that satisfactorily addresses and corrects the existing encroachments in the town right-of-way. And number two, all conditions contained in the original resolution of subdivision approval dated 4/18/23 must be met. And number three, recreation fees in the amount of $12,500 due to the town of East Fishkill prior to the signing of the subdivision plat in final form by the duly authorized officer of the East Fishkill Planning Board. And number four?
Satisfactorily addresses, applicant satisfactorily addresses the review member from the town engineer dated 2/15/24.
Okay, with that additional condition, be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. Do you have a second for this resolution?
Second.
Thank you, Lori. And the vote will be a roll call vote. Board member Lori G.
Aye.
Ed Mioshi.
Aye.
Sarah Bledsoe.
Aye.
Richard Campbell.
Aye.
Donald Pepe.
Aye.
John Greenan.
Aye.
John Eichman, I'm an aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, we have a couple of items still on the agenda. Woodland Estates. For Woodland Estates, I think my understanding is, and that by the way, is the residential project that we heard about at the last meeting.
Correct.
And in order to be able to start to move forward with Seeker, the applicant has asked us to declare intent. And I think we're prepared to do that this evening.
Correct, to do all their due diligence, start meeting with the agencies, I need to have the seeker initiated. So we're, would be initiating seeker tonight by declaring our intent to be lead agent.
Okay, so could I have a motion to declare intent to be lead agency?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and the last item that is not on the agenda, which is another one that I'll ask Michelle actually to speak to this.
Sure. So I don't know if you recall that previously we had, we had a joint public hearing scheduled with the town board for a project on the I Park site. So they're going to reschedule, they're trying to schedule that for the 25th of July. And it would be a warehouse project for East Fishkill I Park. They've submitted an application, they submitted fees for a, at this point, it's a spec warehouse on the I Park site.
So what we need to do is to actually schedule.
So we're, we're having a joint public hearing, the town board's already scheduled it. So we're just kind of announcing that this is a joint public hearing, that the planning board will be in attendance at that public hearing. And at that public hearing, they'll be talking to the special permit that is required in order to do a warehouse facility in that location. And then what will happen, which has happened in previous applications, is the public hearing for the special permit would be completed, but it would be adjourned for the site plan. And at that point, it would come to the planning board for site plan review, to complete site plan review.
So we simply need to schedule our involvement with the joint.
Correct, we're just announcing that we're gonna have a public hearing, a joint public hearing on that date. And I believe it starts at 6, is it 6:00 or 6:30? 6.
Okay, so we're simply announcing.
July 25.
Pursuant to our previous adjournment.
Correct.
Okay, understood.
What was the date, the 25th?
July 25.
July 25.
At 6 o'clock, July 25, at 6 o'clock.
Will that include us in our capacities as well?
Pardon me?
Should that include us in our capacities as well?
You could come, but they will come back here for site plan approval, so you will have another bite at the apple, so to speak.
Thank you. We'll still have a lot of review.
And if you guys can just let me know if you can make that, because I know you haven't been told that.
Okay. Okay. And I think that completes the agenda. Is there any further business to be brought before the planning board? If not, I'll accept a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
So all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you.